Welcome to the regular briefing session of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. This briefing today is for the December 2 meeting. We have a lot of business to take care of right at the top of this meeting. First, we're going to have an update on the COVID problems, needs, and interests in our community from our Public Health Director Joshua Swift. Mr. Swift, as you come forward, I would like to also point out that Dr. Christian Oll, Christopher Oll from Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center will follow up with his update on COVID-19. So as you can see, these are things we have to address on a regular basis, and we're very fortunate to have two experts with us. And then later, we'll have a discussion regarding proclamation of the North Carolina National Guard that we're going to make, and our Vice Chairman is going to go down and tell us all about it. But let's begin now with Joshua Swift, and if you would, sir, just give us the good news and the bad news. I don't want to hear the bad news, but you've got it all.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. I appreciate you letting me take this time to give the weekly update. So I will start with this, the daily update that you're all used to. You can see we had 82 cases over the last 24 hours. Our 14-day case count is 851, and we're averaging 61 cases per day over the last 14 days. So it's ticked up just a little bit over the last week or so. Our percent positive is slightly up as well at 5.5%. Our deaths are relatively stable at 576. We have had two deaths in the last week, which is unfortunate and sad, but also it's we're good that that has slowed down and less deaths over the last few days than we did a few weeks, a few months ago. Our percent of the population of adults that are fully vaccinated is at 69%. So each day we're setting records, it's an all-time high, so we're getting there, and we're getting very close to that 70% mark. Also, our percent of the population that has had at least one dose is now at 73%. And you can see that our level of community transmission is still high, and I have one slide about that in just a moment. Looking at our cases per week, you can see where we hit our peak back during the Delta variant. We've had a long decline over the past few weeks, but now that second full week of November, we're starting to see an incline again. We went from 358, 355, two weeks consecutively, now up to 422. I hope this is just a blip in the road, but I'll be honest with you, with holidays coming and just winter coming, and we're all indoors more, I'm concerned that it might go up. The next slide looks at our percent positive. Again, this is a weekly number. You can see where we bottomed out. We were at 4.9, 4.8, 4.7, then we went back up that second week of November. So we're still, again, just like the cases, wanting to see if that's if we're going to immediately go back down, or if that's going to be start of an upward trend. This next slide is what I was referring to. This is from the CDC, looking at the level of community transmission. This is across the state. You can see that Forsyth County is still in that high community transmission rate. We're at around, the number we're at, we're at around 120 cases per 100,000 over the past week, and what that does, we need to get below 100 to get into the next range, the next level of transmission. This next slide is looking at our vaccination status. So what you have is, in the blue, you have the individuals with one dose, at least one dose, and then in the orange is the percent that's fully vaccinated. So you can see the breakdown by race, you can see the breakdown by age. Would draw your attention to two things. One is that every week, we're obviously in all of the ranges, we're seeing an uptick gradually in the number of people that are getting the vaccine. But even in our older population, which was heavily vaccinated, that keeps going up. So you can see we're now at 90% of people that are 75 and older are fully vaccinated. And then draw your attention to the small number, close to the middle, that is our five to 11-year-olds. It's been about 10 days that we've been offering the vaccine for this age group, and we're now, actually, it's been updated, it's actually now 9% of that group is partially vaccinated. They got their first dose, and that's equates 3,205 little five to 11-year-olds. So a few things there. Last week, last Saturday, we were at four, we were in four places on Saturday. We were at the Health Department, we were at the Children's Museum, and we were at Conoc and Gibson Elementary Schools. These are some pictures. We keep Todd Luck busy going around all the places where we're giving vaccine, and he was out there, and you can see some of the pics, pictures of the little ones coming to get their vaccine. Next is, this Saturday, we'll be hosting a back-to-school clinic, we'll be working with the school system, we'll also be working with the School Health Alliance. So this day, we're not only going to have throughout the day, from 9:00 to 3:00, we'll have COVID vaccine available for kids and for adults, but we're also going to have those back-to-school immunizations, and they'll be actually be able to get physicals through a mobile trailer that'll be outside of the Health Department in Haynes CME parking lot. This is something we did earlier in the fall, had a huge demand there, and we're doing that again as the state deadline is looming for the end of November. And let's see, I believe this is my last slide. Just again, you know, we have the Pfizer available for five to 11-year-olds. The vaccine, we're open at the Health Department for adults and children throughout the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Fridays, 8:00 to 5:00, Thursdays, 8:00 to 8:00. We're again, like I said, we're going to be open this Saturday, then we're going to take the Saturday off after Thanksgiving, and back on the 4th and the 11th. There's the link and the number for appointments. Be happy to take any questions, or if we want to go straight into Dr. Oll's presentation, then we can.
Questions for Mr. Swift? Comments?
I don't have any questions. Always commending you for the hard work that you do in the community. But I would, I wanted to go back to the slide that had the ethnicities listed there. And for the children, is it possible to start reporting in terms of the children, their ethnicities, so that we can ensure that there is some equity in terms of the vaccinations in the community?
I will make a note of that, Ms. McDaniel, and look, I'm not sure if that's available at this time.
Okay.
But I will see if we can get that information.
Certainly, that would be helpful for me in the, in the future, so that we can kind of know where we're needing to be in our communities. Thank you.
Mr. Swift, since you're going to be doing this on Saturday, are you asking citizens just to walk in, or should they make an appointment to make sure that they get there? And I'm specifically thinking, since it's Saturday, children between 5:00 and 11:00, would it be much better for you and your staff, because I know you're worked to death on just about every day, but the bottom line is, you want to make sure that when the parents or the caregiver, whomever, brings a child in, that they get that shot. What's the best way to do it?
So the best thing to do is to go to the website and to make an appointment, or to call our number, 582-0800. But the schedule right now, for the most part, I can't guarantee it, but if you show up, there's a very, very good chance that you can make an appointment immediately, right then.
Good, okay. Any further questions?
Just one quick one. Sorry.
One quick one. In terms of fully vaccinated, at some point, are you going to include the booster shot into that fully part, in the definition of fully?
So that's a question we've asked the state, and they haven't given us a clear answer on that. Right now, as it still stands, fully vaccinated is two doses Moderna, two doses of Pfizer, or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Got it. Additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Swift. Appreciate it. We're going to switch now to Dr. Christopher Oll, Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center. I guess we say Wake Forest Atrium or Atrium Wake Forest, one of the two, for an update from Dr. Oll on his view from that particular area of the problems, needs, and interests related to COVID-19. Dr. Oll?
Yeah, I guess I could, just don't call us late for dinner, right? If the name changes. How is it pleasure to present with my good friend, Dr. Swift. It's sort of a bit, I don't have a lot to add. In regards to the question about what's fully vaccinated, you know, at some point, we will change to a three-shot series, I think, in the definition of fully vaccinated. It's, it's been very kind of coming together to say that the initial series of shots really should be three shots for everyone at zero, one, and six months. And then for the vaccinated people, it would probably include some boosters after that. So at some point, you know, how much you can get out of boosters just kind of falls off. So one may happen, I don't know. It ought to be a few months off yet, I think. Some countries in Europe are already starting to study months, a two-shot, to be fully vaccinated. So if you're traveling, you have to kind of pay attention to that right now, because a lot of countries in Europe now have stipulations where you can't go into restaurants or places and such unless you've been fully vaccinated, and the definitions are changing. It's really, it's a little bit complicated if you're traveling. Excuse me. So the big question is, is, as Joshua showed, our cases are kind of slowly increasing, and what is that going to mean for us? Just a bit of perspective, our total cases are probably about a fourth of what we had this time last year, and the slope has increased, ignoring what we had in this time last year. And it will continue to go up, probably. I was hoping for a bit of a longer streak path before they go up, especially during the virus season, but I am afraid that's probably not going to be extended much in the end of September at all. How high they'll go up, well, I think that they'll probably go up to about half of what we had in September, somewhere around that range. Generally, with pandemics, when you get a rate country, which is definitely small, as more of the populations are community, there's de-vaccination after infection. The thing that's going on right now is we're seeing signals that it may be kind of a difficult influenza and other virus season. RSV, which is the respiratory virus, that can be particularly a problem in children and in the vaccinated people, is going up. And colleges across the whole eastern seaboard, and the rest are seeing outbreaks of influenza. And these are colleges that are really well vaccinated for COVID, and have had casualties for COVID, and it's starting to be free. But thanks to Florida State University, there have been three cases of COVID in St. Sapporo in South in the last two weeks, and a lot of the 100 cases of influenza, for almost a ratio of 51. And so that's going to end up being a problem in our communities as we get into the pandemic as well. But some COVID, some flu, and other viruses, and it's going to be important for everyone to get tested, because starting in January, they're starting to have some oral treatment for people with underlying health conditions for COVID that they can get by prescription, which would be a pill, be a monthly pill, a passicle. And you need to know if a person has COVID or not, that those drugs need to be given within three days or so for them to be effective. You also need to know if it's in influenza, with the statement for that. And when it gets hit the right way, unless you got COVID, and you don't have the quarantine to set off, so testing's going to become very important. And in term of, term of ratting the cages to get more testing available, the community's there.
Well, we've lost the sound.
Yeah, and I didn't hear what you said before that, anyway.
Well, Dr. Oll?
Somebody heard me. Couldn't have been me, I almost, no, no, no. I'm sorry. I guess as I was saying, as we get through into, into March, things will start to fall off again, and then in April, and I think as we get into the springtime, we won't be thinking about COVID every day anymore. So we've got a few more months to go, I think the rest is behind us. As far as masking goes, there's been all recommendations that we continue to mask to get us through the next couple, three months. I know that a lot of people don't want to hear that, but if everyone starts taking them off now, it'll go worse, more so than it would if it was. So I'll conclude with that. Any questions?
Well, the sound has been somewhat muffled for the entire time you were on the air. We couldn't send.
I'm sorry, I'm, but, um, my little phone reader says it's fine, I don't know. If anything, the language you want to hear again, I'll try to shout.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Oll, for the report you've given us. Dr. Christopher Oll from Wake Forest Atrium Baptist Medical Center. Now, we're going to do something we really looked forward to doing, and we're going to do it right now. The Forsyth County Board of Commissioners would like to present a proclamation to the North Carolina National Guard. They performed some terrific services, especially on some of the subjects we've covered. I would like to ask Vice Chairman Don Martin to go down to the podium and read and present the proclamation, too, and I would ask Captain Hartley and Sergeant First Class Craig of the National Guard to receive the proclamation, and thank you all for coming. I think there's, I see three, and that third person is Joshua Swift, because he was the recipient, if I'm not mistaken, with all of the people he's had working at the Public Health Department. He needed the help, so the National Guard came to your rescue. Commissioner Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proclamation recognizing North Carolina National Guard for its assistance to Forsyth County during the COVID-19 pandemic, whereas Forsyth County deeply values and recognizes the strength, courage, and resilience of the North Carolina National Guard exhibited during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas on January 8, 2021, support for Forsyth County's COVID-19 response efforts began, and 35 National Guard soldiers served 329 days until December 3, 2021. Whereas throughout their service, these men and women supported local, state, and federal agencies over the course of the mobilization, keeping their fellow North Carolinians safe during the global pandemic. Whereas the National Guard assisted with 106 community vaccine events, supported the mass vaccine clinics at the Winston-Salem Fairgrounds and Forsyth County Department of Public Health, and delivered and administered COVID-19 vaccine to homebound residents. Whereas the members of the North Carolina National Guard were responsible for assisting the Forsyth County Department of Public Health in the successful administration of over 100,000 doses of COVID-19 vaccine. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Commissioners hereby recognize the exemplary service of the North Carolina National Guard, and thanks them for their outstanding and distinguished service to the state of North Carolina and the citizens of Forsyth County. Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're delighted. Thank you all very much. If you'd like to say something, or, Mr. Swift is ready to talk.
I would just say, we couldn't have done it without the Guard. Appreciate their service. Monumental task, just couldn't do it without them. And I appreciate leadership, the Commissioners, appreciate Ms. Robinson, support of bringing the Guard in to help us with the vaccine events.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your being here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Joshua, I was on a Zoom call yesterday that you participated in emergency management, and I think I'm right, that today is the 617th day since our first case in Forsyth. Is that true?
March 12, 2020, so whatever, that sounds about right.
Well, that puts it in perspective how long it's been.
Day to remember. Now, I'd like to ask our Deputy County Manager Chantel Robinson and our County Manager Dudley Watts to be on your phone, on your feet. Not, you don't have to stand up, just, we're going to do something here. We have four discussion items today. The discussion will take place with RTIC Update, Major Mark Elliott, Major Elliott, if you could come forward, PTRC Regional Food System Assessment, Jennifer, I hope I got this one right, and if I don't, pronounce it when you get up and wake him, Bagrosian, is that correct? Close. And then we'll have Partners Behavioral Health Representative Jackie Copeland. And all of this is to, to talk about the areas of expertise all of these folks are involved with, why they're here, what their mission is, what they expect to accomplish, and what they are accomplishing for the people of Forsyth County. And right now, at this point, I think the Clerk to the Commissioners has taken care of everything, Ashley Sloop. And Captain, are you ready to speak? Wait a minute, I didn't, oh, wait, Sheriff, my golly, it's good to have you here, too.
Good to be here. I appreciate you all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your continued support as we move forward. Thank you for wanting an update on the real-time intelligence. We just presented a brief slide presentation to show you where we were, and where we are, and where we're going with it. And again, thank you for the support that you've given us from what we do. Major Elliott presented a slide presentation, and then anything you want to ask.
Okay, sir.
We'll share with you where we are with it.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Captain?
I can put this in context if you want me to, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So the, the recently request came over around an enhanced drone to really support sort of the intelligence efforts that are underway, and so as I talked to board members about it, there was some interest, and basically, since this board was originally moved forward with the sheriff's concept of the Real-Time Intelligence Center, and then funded some additional staffing back in the beginning of the budget year, the idea was that we just the idea was that we just kind of get an update on RTIC. That's what I heard from board members, and so that's why uh the Sheriff and Major Elliott are here today.
Good, good. I'm just tickled to death to see you, Sheriff, and Captain, we're delighted that you're here.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Uh just real quick, I'll give you a brief update on where we are and some of the success stories that we've had. Some of our objectives we started out with with designing this intelligence center was to reduce crime, evaluate deter criminal activity, especially violent crime, in real time. We wanted to identify suspects and provide investigator support to deputies on the scene as well as detectives, handling follow-up investigations, and increasing safety. All these objectives we talked about from the very first phase on the implementation of this unit. Some of our vision, two of our bullet points uh for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year was to build bridges between residents and law enforcement, and an example of that, we've registered cameras in Forsyth County with residents and local businesses, and as a part of that, we have a automated crime tip and video submission and where residents can anonymously submit tips that are occurring in their neighborhoods, supply that to the Real-Time Center where it gets vetted and analyzed and pushed out to the troops. We have success stories from that. We also wanted to modernize with current technology and equipment, and we purchased a new mobile camera. We use that this year, uh implementation at large-scale events such as Wake Forest Home Football Games as well as Winston-Salem State Homecoming with success. We had zero major incidents at all those events, and I think that's attributed to the staff, the boots-on-the-ground troops that are working these events, but also the intelligence information and the fact that we can protect citizens better with updated technology. So uh one of the things I'd like to pass out real quick is one of the initiatives we talked about, about crime tips and video submissions. These are stickers for folks that register their cameras with the sheriff's office. There's a QR code at the bottom of that sticker. They also can get a yard sign. So you take your phone and you use your photo app on your on your phone and hit that QR code. It takes you directly to GoSCSO, which explains the Real-Time Center. It also explains the initiative on why we're trying to do this with registering cameras in our community so that we can help send messaging out to uh citizens when there's a crime that has occurred in your area, and we're asking for the citizens' uh help in this endeavor. Some of our success stories, uh recently, we've been able to solve two homicides by the use by using existing software and databases to identify suspects and gather evidence. We've utilized technology to identify and locate wanted subjects in stolen vehicles. The Real-Time Center has used real-time intelligence to gather and disseminate accurate information to deputies that were the successful that indicated in the successful recovery of firearms, and we also added the Real-Time Coordinator position. I will say that the staff that are working in the center um vet this information when we get tips from the public. We have seen an increase in the trust from the community because we are actually getting guns off the street from the use of this center. So it's it's a very valuable resource.
Captain, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave that slide, you know, just in general, for for I guess for the future particularly, it would be helpful to me, I like, I mean, the first one, you solved two homicides. The the next three, I'd like to hear utilize technology, identify and locate ten wanted subjects, you know, like the numbers. The RTIC has been used real together and disseminate accurate information to deputies. Well, you know, that's I'm sure happens a lot, but if you it allowed the successful recovery of thirty-five firearms. I mean, I like to see a little more quantified quantified issues because if you did, if each of those is less than ten, then we're spending a lot of money for a few, but if you're getting the thirties and forties and fifties and getting up and and really making a difference, then it's making a difference. So the quantity does make a difference.
Absolutely, and I'll provide that next time, and I apologize for not having those numbers.
Since you're standing up here, Major Elliott, I notice you haven't asked, we haven't even given, and nobody's had a chance to speak, but I just saw on my telephone before this meeting began that a gun was found on the campus at Greensboro Senior High School, Grimsley High School today, and a fourteen-year-old boy was shot at Fourth of July Park in Kernersville, broad daylight. And that's what you do, you're trying to get rid of this stuff.
Yes, sir. I think it's important to realize it's not just our agency, we're working in conjunction with all our local municipalities. It could be Winston, it could be Kernersville, it could be High Point. Uh the criminals that are committing these crimes know no boundaries, so we're working in conjunction. That's why the vision is it's not just a camera-based system, it is an intelligence center. So it's very important that the information that we're getting in, we're vetting that information and we're disseminating it out. We don't just hold the information if it's something that's applying to Kernersville city limits, we're certainly getting on the phone and we're calling Kernersville PD, we're calling Winston, they're also sending that information to us because it's a team effort, and that's what it takes to to try to reduce the crime in our community.
Uh Ms. Robinson, did you want to participate in this conversation at all, or County Manager Dudley Watts?
I'm finished.
Okay. So we've you've covered a lot of territory, Major. Well, I interrupted him. Do you have more?
I just have one, one more.
Sure.
Uh so basically, our vendor that we've been using, uh we will be phasing out up into another phase in the upcoming year, um but these are some opportunities that will give us down the road for enhanced technology. Uh we've been very successful with the platform that we are using, uh that we're very satisfied with our vendor that's helping us with this program. And like I said, it's a it's a information and an intelligence gathering unit, and so it's important that the community knows that there are people behind the the phones, there are people behind the internet, there's all types of information that's being uh vetted and shared in a regional basis, and that's that's what we're doing, so.
I guess you the tie-in with the drone, as the County Manager was referencing, the tie-in with the drone is the current drone system that we use, we have the capability to put the drone in the air and actually in real time see what's happening. Example that would be is a couple of weeks ago, we had a standoff in a part of the county uh in real time, we were able to put the drone in the air at two o'clock in the morning and capture what was going on. Had we not had the drone, that would have turned the whole different way as this gentleman slipped out of the house, the drone captured him leaving in real time. We were able to capture that. What we're asking for now is a more enhanced drone system because as technology evolves, uh capability evolves, and we just want to be in step with modern technology to make sure that we're giving the best product, safety as relates to the RTIC. Some of the features that he left off of the RTIC was the heat map on the RTIC. We can pull up a heat map and show you where the crimes are happening, the time of day, what the crimes are that are happening. The system that we have, uh the Sentry system on, where we can put certain things in there that we don't want to talk about publicly uh in terms of of things that we can do to keep the community safe. And so when you talk about uh crimes being solved, cars being picked up, the most recent homicide that we had within this area, the RTIC was a part of that because of the camera system that we have partnered with with businesses throughout the community, whether it be Shell, whether it be Quality Mark, whether it be Mark Tire, whether it be Parish Tire, whatever they may be, that are buying into this program and putting their cameras up, that mean that we're capturing a lot of things that are happening that are happening in the community. And so I want to thank you all for the success of allowing us to begin the program, and we just like your continued support as we move forward. And I appreciate, that was a great question, Dr. Martin. Uh for future residents, I'll gladly detail numbers. Normally, that's what we typically do, but it's been a rough twenty-four hours, so uh we left a few things out.
Well, I can tell you this, you know, I've been around a long time, but I don't remember this type of crime being produced daily in not just Forsyth County either, in Kilford County, and it's it's comforting to know we've got folks like the Major and you and all the people in in the Sheriff's Department. It's just gotta be able to go to bed at night without worrying about stuff like that. Commissioners, any questions or any comments?
Chairman, I do have a question. Um, thank you again, Sheriff Kimbrough and your staff for being here today. However, um I do have a question about the drone. Is the drone used for surveillance, or is that just something that you're gonna be using when needed?
So the drone is used for a lot of different things. Drones used for like, for example, when we have autism patients or someone lost a seal alert, where we can put the drone in there, we uh found the young young man uh who was lost, who had some issues, we were able to put the drone in there and track him. The drone give us more coverage than physical manpower. So the drone has a multiple usage of it. If there's a situation like the situation took place in Clemens and we need a map of what's happening on the ground, we can put the drone in there and map it out as opposed to hours that it would take to draw it up. If we've got a situation and we need eyes in the air without putting humans at risk, the drone is eyes in the air that we can see what's happening in real time and speak to the issue that is happening.
Yeah, so some of the cautions that I have is with regards to privacy. So the drone is uh notating when it's being used and how it's been used, not just navigating over people's property.
Right, so when we use a drone, the drones are used in areas where you don't have an expectation of privacy out of an open air. We're not looking at people's houses, we're not looking at people's windows. I'll say that again, we definitely not looking in houses, we definitely not looking in windows. What we're using the drone for, the situation that we had out on the end of the county two weeks ago, the drone was in the air covering the exterior of the house. So when the young, the man came out of the house in the middle of the night, we were able to see that. So by no means are we violating anybody's privacy, and we do document when it is used because there's a report. Anytime we go out, there's a sheriff's office report, resources that are used for that.
Fair enough. And my last question was relative to the QC code. Um so would this work on any security system?
No, um actually, what that is, is just a registry. So we cannot tap into your secure system at your house. All that is, is a volunteer program. Um it's just like a community watch program, but digitally where we can, for example, um if we have an incident in your neighborhood and there's a rash of auto break-ins, you may or may not be aware that that is going on, but because you register your camera, we know that we can reach out to you and say, we've had a recent break uh recent number of break-ins in your community. Could you look at your video system and see if there's anything that looks suspicious on your camera system, and if so, here's how you can share that video with us. But we have no way of going into your private system and looking at your cameras. All that does is a registry, it's just like a community watch program.
So a prime example that Commissioner McDaniel's is like, for example, if an incident takes place that took place out in Kernersville in the middle of the night, we were able to send out a message to the people that are registered with our camera system to send us any information that took place, and by doing that, we were able to identify who the uh the person was. So that's basically what it is. The registering program that you saw is going very popular within the community, asking people to register their camera system, their door ring system with us.
Thank you.
But to answer your question, it doesn't have to be a specific vendor, it's just the fact that you do have a camera at your house.
Exactly.
And that we would reach out to you in the effort to try to see if you have anything on your camera that would be useful.
Fair enough. That was easy. Thank you.
I presume you're open to any questions from anyone in the county if they want to give you a call, is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll move on. Thank you very much.
Major Elliott, I want to apologize for calling you Captain earlier.
That's okay.
I I heard that and I said, whoa, I wouldn't, I wouldn't maintain. I apologize.
I've been around for a long time, it's okay. Thank you.
Sheriff Kimbrough, heavy is the head that wears a crown, keep your head up. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you both very much for coming in. Uh Mr. County Manager, uh we have on our schedule here Jackie Copeland from Partners Behavioral Health. Would you like to take it from here and look at the rest of the agenda?
I will be glad to. In fact, if I could move uh have the second um discussion item, we've got folks from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Governments, Jennifer Bedrosian.
Oh, good.
Are you in the audience? There you go. Um and you've got some staff members with you. They have um I was made aware that they have completed a regional food system assessment um and wanted to kind of present those findings to you. This board's been really active in the local food um initiative, and it goes a number of years back, and so um as as I mentioned, the PTRC's has worked through that and and is here to make some some findings, presentation. And and if you could introduce your team, uh Ms. Bedrosian, that would be terrific.
Thank you for having us here today. Um my name is Jennifer Bedrosian, and I am the Food Systems Coordinator at Piedmont Triad Regional Council, and I help support our regional food council as well. Um the folks behind me, I'll let them step up and introduce themselves as well, and um these are a few of our food council members.
You don't have to wear your mask when you speak because it's hard to understand sometimes.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Banner. Um I was the inaugural food, um Urban Food Council Chair for Winston-Salem and also a founding member of this PTRC uh food council from Winston-Salem, born and bred.
Good for you.
And you sit on our council, don't you?
Yeah.
Want to tell them, thank you.
Your food, um your um agriculture advisory council.
Good.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Connor Miller, and I also reside in Forsyth County in the Lewisville area, um and I'm also a founding member of this council, and I work for Carolina Farm Stewardship Association as their local food distribution coordinator.
Good. Thank you very much.
Hello to all. I am Gary R. Williams. I'm one of the founders of uh the Sheriff Cooperative here in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I am here and part of the uh food council and glad to be here today.
We're delighted you're here. Thank you. Ashley Sloop is preparing for the slide presentation titled Food System Profile.
So there should have been a link. Working out the technical difficulty. Um I'll go ahead and give you a little bit of background. So as I mentioned, um we have a regional food council that we serve, work with twelve counties of the Piedmont Triad. Of course, Forsyth is one of those. Um we worked with a consulting group over the last year and a half to produce a regional food system assessment. So that involved community engagement and data collection in all twelve counties. We're gonna pull up some slides here in a minute that show that um we have a presentation for you today. We produced a couple of documents, and one of those is a one hundred and thirty-plus page report, and the other one is an online assessment, um which is a little bit more user-friendly and kind of condenses the information down a little bit. In addition to that, we'll get to this a little bit later, but what you're seeing on your screen here are individual county profiles, and um so each county has a profile that also um compiles that information. So we're gonna give you a really high-level overview today, um if there's, and we'll also ask you for questions, but if there's any information that you would like us to expand on or come back at another time, um we would be happy and um absolutely would be willing to do that because we know it's a lot of information. Let's see. There we go. Say next slide. You can go to the next slide. We would like to also acknowledge that this work is funded through Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina Foundation. They're current, they funded this assessment as well as currently supporting my position and the work of the council. And then, as I mentioned, we worked with a consulting group, and that is Carolina Creative Works, um who um helped us to um conduct the data um portion of this. Next slide, please. So this is the homepage of the interactive online report. We'll give you a link to that, um so you all can pull that up, and you can go to the next slide. Prior to beginning our assessment, the food um council adopted this definition of equity to frame our community outreach and data collection, and that definition is equity is just and fair inclusion into a society in which all can participate, prosper, and reach their full potential. Next slide, please. I'm just gonna point out a couple of unique pieces to the online food assessment. Um one is that on this assessment, you can, there are some video components here where you can hear directly from the folks at Carolina Creative Works that conducted the data outreach. Next slide, please. And we also will talk, we'll touch on this a little bit later as well, but we were able to produce heat maps, um which you'll see here, this is um a map of the triad region, and we partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank to do this, and it was the first time that we've been able to gather granular level data by zip code, um which was for food bank participation in all of our counties. Next slide, please. And these are the county profiles that I mentioned. We can move along. Next slide. And these are the five research buckets that we focused on, so we'll be again touching on these. We've, we're gonna try to move through the. on these, we're going to try to move through this, you know, a minute or so per, per research bucket. So we're going to start with food security, and I'm going to pass this off to one of our Food Council members to walk you through that. Next slide, please.
Now, you know I'm in trouble if I only have a minute. But I wanted to talk a little bit about food insecurity in our community here, and I am on this particular Food Council, and the review was regionally, but I'm mostly interested in Forsyth County. And so we provided some insight doing the research and doing the study and so forth, and then we gleaned some of the recommendations, and those recommendations, we wanted to bring back here to Forsyth County to improve our conditions here, the conditions of food insecurity in our community. Food insecurity is the absence or the opportunity for folk to readily have access to healthy nutritional foods. And the end result of that is people are sick and people are unable to function at their highest levels and so forth. And so we want to fix that. We want to make sure that everybody has access to healthy nutritional foods. We are, again, in Forsyth County and the area, there are 21 food deserts here. One of our locations, where we've set up houses in a food desert. And so what we're endeavoring to do there is to make sure that people have access to food, so that they can come to us. Again, let me see, where am I at? The state of being, you can go past that. Here are some, some information I think would be important to you, it's information that shows the statistics, the level of food insecurity here in our community. And you'll notice that at COVID-19, the numbers went up. It was no surprise to any of us. And so that's what this represents, all right? 1% to 3% is what our community experienced in terms of increased food insecurity during this period of time, all right? Data, the data comes from a number of sources, the data came from, from food harvest, it came from a number of government agencies and so forth, and so that information is there. Again, I would encourage you, if you want to see this information firsthand, you would go to the site, and you can highlight particular areas, especially Forsyth County, as I've done, and see exactly what the issues are in particular places and at particular times, all right? All right, greater collaboration was one of the recommendations, and we've already begun to do that here in Forsyth County. We have, what we do every Friday, first Fridays, we do a food chat. And so all the organizations here in Forsyth County, we come together. Those of us who are doing food, so that we can collaborate, so that we can share intel and sharing the work that one another's doing. And so collaboration, we're doing well there. Building small grant programs. In COVID-19, we were able to get a couple of grants, grants were given to us so that we could feed people. And that was powerful, that was helpful to our community. Hunger alleviation incentive programs, yes, we do have some incentive programs. We'd like to expand those and keep those going after the funds run out, the COVID-19 opportunities. And then tracking Food Bank participation, yeah, Food Banks work, but just minimally. And so what we want to do is, we want to check, track what they're doing, right? And then incorporate what they're doing and what we're doing here in Forsyth County. All right, what's the next one? Collaborate, yes, we do collaborate. We collaborate with the city of Winston-Salem, we collaborate with Forsyth County on a number of levels, just to keep one another, you know, up to speed in terms of what's going on. And we've collaborated here with the, with the county commissioners, and so collaboration we've done, we've done well there. Again, I'm going to give way to one of my other counterparts. I am available here in Forsyth County, and so if you have any questions in terms of some of the information here, we are available to help interpret some of that, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and Jennifer. Okay, thank you. So yes, we wanted to expound on what Gary said, like he said, there's a lot of collaboration going on, probably on more of a grassroots level, because with this hunger, it's been exacerbated by COVID-19, it was already prevalent in our communities, but now it's like epic, and it's a crisis situation. So from there, you will see Forsyth County has a number of food councils, probably you never heard about, but we've been in close relations with each other, sharing best practices, learning lessons, you know what I mean, trading jewels. And the other counties might not as much, but with the emphasis on Forsyth County, we're looking on innovative ways to create and build upon our food system, and be able to serve the needs of our, the ones who feel it the most. If you will, go to the next slide. So with that, you know, we've suggested that we leverage resources with the transportation planners, you know, because transportation is key to being able to access food. And, you know, even though we're in situations where they said is food deserts, or neighborhoods that have been afflicted with food apartheid, we still have opportunity there to return to our roots, like back in the day, which I'm sure many of you know, we had community corner stores, and we had agrarian commons, if you will, where people grew food in their backyards, or, you know, in abandoned lots, well, it wasn't abandoned back then, but in community parcels. So we look, we're looking for ways that the food councils across this region can start sharing information with you all, so you can be in better understanding with these groups, and understand there are projects underway with even transportation. Like back in the day, we had Safe Bus in Winston-Salem that would serve the needs of Winston Black residents, you know what I mean? But now, a lot of things have been handed over to the supermarkets and to the government. So actually, we are coming to take some of the weight off of you, you know, do some of this governance in the community, and bring it back to you. And that's what we're doing as far as creating our food councils. You know, it's given us a great introduction to self or community governance, we're learning a lot, and we just want to be able to use this information to leverage resources into our communities.
Next slide, please. Okay, so then, looking at food and farm production, we used the USDA Ag Census for a lot of this data, and found that there are over 1 million acres actively being farmed in the triad region. And you can see here that this just shows Surrey Randolph and Rockingham Counties are leading in terms of acres in production. But this data is not fully inclusive, because the USDA Ag Census does not cover farms and rural areas that are under an acre, and farms in urban areas that are under a quarter of an acre. So while that does seem, you know, kind of like small potatoes maybe, it does leave out a large number of small-scale farmers. And next slide, please. And then when we just look at product sales across the region, we broke it down into three categories, looking at crop product sales, which includes edible crops like vegetables, and then animal sales, so that's livestock like cattle, pork, and chicken, and then commodities, so those are non-edible items like corn and soybeans. And again, we can see Surrey Randolph are sort of the leaders with a lot of that, makes sense, given that they had the most number of acres in production. Next slide, please. And all of these breakdowns, you can get more detail if you look at the county profiles as well. So the notable trends in food and farm production, we know that livestock plays a really significant role in our region, and we also know that processing facilities were greatly impacted during the pandemic, particularly small to mid-size processing facilities. We also saw that a large majority of the farms in our region are small farms, and so those are farms that are making less than $100,000 a year. So it creates a really big opportunity for collaboration and innovation with those small farms, which we saw with multiples examples across the state and the region during the pandemic of really innovative food assistance programs that supported small farmers to do food box programs or food prescription programs to get locally sourced food to households in need. And then unfortunately, the region is also experiencing a huge loss in farmland, which really matches what is a trend we're seeing across the nation. And this also, again, came from the Ag Census, and we can see that Randolph and Surrey Counties are experiencing a 60% drop in the number of farms in their counties. Next slide, please. So then when we look at our region's demographics of who's farming in the region, we see that unsurprisingly, 97% of principal farm operators identify as white. But what is significant to note is that the demographics of who our principal farm operators are doesn't match our region's population. And so if you look here at the race and ethnicity chart, it shows that while in our region, 2% of the population is black, or excuse me, 2% of the population in the region, it's 21% of the population in our region, but only 2% are farming, farming. So there's a huge discrepancy in who is our principal farm operators. And then the same thing shows for age as well, and when you look at the Forsyth County breakdown, it also shows age. And so we see that there's an uneven distribution in age in the county. Majority of our principal farm operators are 55 and older, majority men and majority white. Next slide, please. Oh, and then with the demographics, it's also just important to note that, again, with the Ag Census, when we're talking about principal farm operators, it is referring to the operator, so anyone who is a farm worker, or a tenant farmer, or anyone doing cooperative farming is not included in that, and that does significantly underrepresent farmers of color, who are, tend to be farm workers and not owners of the land, or are on smaller farms, or cooperatively farming. Okay, so then, how can we use this data? So, you know, we saw that there are some concerning trends happening in the region, but there are things that we can do about it, and so one of those is to build more resilience with our meat processing facilities in the county. And there's a really exciting partnership happening with Mitchell and Sons Processing Facility in Surrey County? Stokes County, I always get that mixed up. They're doing a big expansion, and working with Forsyth Tech with that as well, to start a butchery course, to teach people how to do their own butchery. And then developing more incentives for small farmers as well, to keep more food in our region, in addition to offering more protections and incentives to keep farmland in production and not being turned over to development. Next slide, please. So then, when we look at supply chain and our supply chain data, overall in the region, we found that 67% of the food consumed in the triad is imported from outside of the region. And so this shows that we have an instance of supply chain leakage, which is sort of just that import-export deficit. And this shows that, once again, there's an opportunity for innovation and collaboration to keep more of the food in our region staying in the region instead of being sent outside of the region. But of note is that Forsyth County is one of the few counties in our region where we found measurable levels of food grown in Forsyth County actually stays in the county. And that's due to the large number of processing facilities that we have here. And then, in addition to that, investing in infrastructure is a big need, there's a particular big need for cold storage infrastructure that is designated for food and agriculture products. A large number of cold storage is designated to medical hospital use. Next slide, please. Okay, pass it back to Jennifer.
I'll wrap us up here with the last research bucket and a closing. We know that food supply chains bring in over $28 billion in annual sales to our region. And Forsyth and Guilford bring in the most, I think Forsyth is about $7.4 billion in annual sales. You can see the breakdown here of number of businesses by industry in each county. Next slide, please. So what we learned during this process, and this just kind of builds on some of the things we've talked about already, but there are gaps in the intermediary market, which means that, say, small farmers at a farmer's market want to scale up, and maybe they want to start selling to institutions, or they want to form a food co-op, they need some support. There's, there's not as much available options for people to move in that middle space before they grow to be really large. We also know, I'm sure this is no news to anyone, that restaurants were hit particularly hard during the pandemic, and we are still experiencing that now. And the cold storage needs across the region, which Kana also mentioned, and it is, also just want to note that you all may have seen the Food Resiliency Task Force Report from outgoing President Ronnie Smith, and they also echoed some of these same findings in their report as well, about cold storage in particular. Next slide, please. So again, kind of what can we do about this? As the Task Force Report reiterated this, and we've reiterated it in a lot of our presentation today, is that coordinated support, opportunities for folks to work together, and opportunities for institutional purchasing, which would help with that intermediary market. There are opportunities for institutions to commit to buying local, even if it were 10%, that would make a significant impact in helping to support farmers, and if they want to band together to start selling to institutions like hospitals, or universities, et cetera. And then finally, investing in infrastructure, so you've already heard about cold storage needs, that could also be broadband access, we've heard that need quite a bit, as well as digital literacy and opportunities to build skills for farmers, could even be infrastructure like access to, in cities for community gardens to access water. Next slide, please. So that wraps up our five research buckets, I know that was a lot of information to kind of throw at you. If you're curious about what we're doing next, these are three action items that our council is working on, and one of those is partner presentations, which we're doing now, we've been making rounds around all of the triad region to give partner presentations to our Board of Commissioners. We've also been to Wake Forest University and virtually presented at NC State University for a class, as well as with well care, managed care across the state. Additionally, we are working on some, we piloted a micro grant opportunity in Forsyth County this last year, which was very successful, and we'll be building that out and offering it to other counties this coming year, and also planning some council-to-community listening sessions, so we can continue to build on this data and continue to hear from our community. Next slide, please. This is our current list of Food Council members, we do have some folks that are going to be rolling off in December, and we have opportunities for new people to join in January. We're excited about that. We've always got great purchase, participation from folks in Forsyth County, and we're grateful for that. Next slide, please. Here's a link to that interactive report, it's hosted on Carolina Creative Works website right now, that's the link you see there, and we're transferring it over to the Piedmont Triad Regional Council website this next year. Again, that's me, Jennifer Bedrosian, and my contact information, please reach out if you have any questions, or on any updates or partners.
I have two questions, Jennifer. One is, where are you headquartered, the council? And the second question is, how do you, how do you work with the Agriculture Extension Service, for example, for North Carolina State?
Piedmont Triad Regional Council is headquartered in Kerners, our office is in Kernersville. The council has had two in-person meetings, and we've been meeting virtually since January of 2020. We will, in the, so we're going to continue those virtual meetings, and then we'll have some quarterly in-person meetings when it is safe to do so. And then, we do, we worked with Cooperative Extension, we have several Food Council members that are Cooperative Extension folks, and then we also worked with them on data collection and throughout this whole food assessment process as well.
I don't know if you're new to it or not, but we have on our board Richard Lindell, who is the Dean of Farmers in North Carolina. How old are you, Richard? 72?
A little bit more. We'll just stay at 72 for a while.
This is a lot of good information, what do you think?
Yeah, they've looked like they've done a lot of work to put all that information together.
Sure did. We thank you all very much for the work you're doing, for coming in here, because I frankly had not heard too much about the council, but I've really learned a lot today, it's been great. Any other questions or comments?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
First, thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation and the council members. You may comment about a relationship between food providers and health organizations, could you comment more about that, please?
We had some great examples of that during the pandemic. One of them actually was a food prescription program in Forsyth County that was a partnership between Wake Forest Baptist Health, working with older adults, and screening for working with older adults and screening for comorbidities, working with older adults and partnering with Second Harvest Food Bank, as well as local farmers to provide food boxes on a weekly basis. There was some data collection that occurred during that process to help document the outcomes, which is kind of unique. Sometimes that's hard to prove that there are positive outcomes. And they did find positive outcomes as well as positive outcomes for depression and loneliness, too. We know that those rates spiked during the pandemic and the program actually shows that they helped alleviate some of those, the symptoms that people reported. So that's one example. There are many across our region. But there are, I think the important thing to think about is just that was an academic university partnering with local farmers, partnering with a food bank. And similar programs like that are very helpful.
Well, thank you all very much for taking time. I'm sorry, Ted Kaplan has a question.
I've got one question. You talked about cooperating with different agencies. You never mentioned DSS and the food stamp, which is now called SNAP program. In this county, currently, I think we're about $70 million worth of the SNAP program. We've been asked to increase it about 25%. Seems like an awful large program that's not included in your assessment.
I don't, yeah, did we? I don't know if we focused specifically on SNAP benefits, although I think there are a lot of examples of how successful that program is. And one of the things that I know that has come up in some of our counties is the, are barriers to participating in that program, where the broadband, in some of our more rural counties in particular, where the broadband access and the cost of the program. And if you have more specific questions about it, I can do a little research and follow up with you.
I don't need you to do research, say, but you should include it in your research. It seems to me that food stamps, SNAP program is a very large program. And when you do your statistics on food deserts and all these other things, it just runs, it runs contrary to what we're being told about the folks who receive help from the SNAP program and they can use it in any store they want to go to. So it's a much bigger program. It's so big. And I don't know how you could go around doing what you do and not include what they do. So maybe next time you could find out what they do and how they improve nutrition and so forth for our community. I'm certain it's throughout Northwest North Carolina.
Well, does that not just get at the definition of a food desert? I mean, because it seems to me, food desert is where you are, it's at large areas that you cannot purchase food in that area or nutritious food. I don't know. But, but because, because what I sense the SNAP program is, you can, because you can get it everywhere, a lot of people go to quote-unquote grocery stores. And if you're in an area there's no grocery store, then you're not, then it's not available, readily available. I suspect, though, that some of the small corner markets that you can use SNAP program there, I guess.
Yes.
And, and I guess, I guess that's, I guess it is kind of, I guess it is intertwined. It may be an interesting question and probably gets into how you define food deserts. I was actually thinking about something else, if we can switch gears. I heard your issue about in the region that, you know, we obviously import a lot of our food. And you're suggesting that it would be good to have food processing here locally for the, for the consumable produce, et cetera. We grow here in our region and that that would be a good thing. And I'm not disagreeing to be a good thing, but it seems to me that part of the way the large food processors work is that they are so competitive. I mean, if Atrium, Novant Hospital, two gigantic food-consuming purchasing entities, and they put out a bid to buy, you know, fresh produce, it is very possible that the tomatoes from South Carolina will be cheaper than tomatoes grown here out of a, out of a local processing, small enterprise. And it seemed to be, that the free market actually ends up being a barrier to a small food processing, you know, sort of area, you know, company to compete for that kind of business. Are you getting what I'm saying? I mean, it seems to me that that part of the equation is not a part of what you have studied so far. Am I missing something here? Because people are going to bid it and they're going to buy it where they can get it the cheapest for large consumers and large customers. So am I missing the boat here?
No, I mean, I think you're correct there. One of the things I know that's happening in Medicaid transformation is allocating for food boxes for, and I know that's, for pilot programs, is with the healthy opportunities, is designating fair prices for farm, to be able to include, you know, those food boxes so it is a little bit more competitive. But I do hear what you're saying. And yeah, I mean, I think that is going to be a factor sometimes is that you can just get it cheaper somewhere else. But if we are able to work with programs or fund programs that are able to pay farmers a fair price, it would be helpful to the small farmers in our economy.
If I can add, I think an example of this is across the state, we have a large number of food hubs, ranging from small-scale nonprofit rural food hubs to large for-profit aggregators that are serving multiple states or a whole region, to just serving maybe one county or a handful of counties. But the Piedmont Triad region actually does not have a food hub that is based in the region. There are some that buy from farmers here or distribute within the county, but we don't actually have one that's based here. And we did see over the pandemic that food hubs really were able to sort of respond well and pivot and, and sort of respond to demand where our sort of larger industrial food system had a lot of cogs in its system. Our local regional food system was able to quickly respond and pivot. And a lot of that was because of our food hubs. And to your point about, you know, institutions such as hospitals and purchasing, there is going to be that competitive price. And, you know, I think you could get cheaper tomatoes, to go with the example, from other sources. But the benefit of having a locally-based food hub or some sort of distributor aggregator is the local economic impact that it'll have. And we did see that during the pandemic because the food hub, purchasing through a food hub, you can still get good wholesale pricing and it benefits the employees of the food hub. It benefits the farmer who's getting paid a livable wage. And then the food is being distributed within that community. And so it has a really impressive economic impact, which we saw at Carolina Farm Stewardship Association. We launched a program called Farm Share during the pandemic, which did exactly that. We sourced from small farms that were being drastically impacted by the pandemic through food hubs who packed food boxes for households in need. And the economic impact was almost double, if not almost triple, the amount that we invested into these farms and food hubs.
But I'll say this, you've given us a lot to say grace over today.
Thank you.
I'm going to say five last words, pardon me. And I appreciate my council members, my partners. I think it's also good to be aware of the lowest denominator in these equations or the grassroots, because just like they laid out nicely, you know, we did have things in place for us to be able to aggregate food and put, you know, boxes together and, you know, serve institutional needs or food prescription programs. But due to the legacy of redlining in our city, like the ones who are impacted the most really don't even have the opportunity to substantially impact it. So that's one thing. And as far as food stamps, that's something that's across America. Like, you know, everybody got access to food stamps. So that's a controlled situation. You know what I mean? So if there's a cut off the food stamps, what are we going to do to feed ourselves? I don't think that's why our council was put together to study the food stamp situation. It was more to build a resilient food economy that can have multiplier effects throughout the community. You haven't heard of a farmer yet going out here slicing off nobody's head. You hadn't heard anybody get up from a meal violently. You know what I'm saying? So it's a lot of things that farming, especially community farming, can alleviate. So like they say, stay in tune and just pay attention.
Keep up, keep up, keep going. Commissioners, we've had four discussion items. We've only been through two of them, but you've given us a lot to think about.
Our compassion.
And thank you all very much for being here. Coming up is Jackie Copeland is going to talk about behavioral health. And Ayesha Carter and Lee Pluckett will talk about recommendations of the American Rescue Act. And Mr. Dudley Watts, would you like to take a brief recess? You want to move forward?
Why don't we go ahead and take care of this update from partners? And then we can take a recess after that if you'd like. But I would like to ask Chantel to come up and really put sort of the transition of the MCO that we've been through kind of in context. And then she'll introduce Mr. Copeland.
Good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So as you know, we realigned with Partners Health Management effective November 1st, and that was a transition from Cardinal Innovations. And so we are now in day 18 of that transition. And so far, so good. What I would like to say is that Partners has really been extremely responsive to our community, to the consumers, to the providers. And they've worked very collaboratively with our transition team. In the 18 days, they have been our LME MCO. I personally have not received any complaints from consumers or providers. And so I'm going to hope that no news is good news. And while there have been some minor things that's come up on Partner's side, they have noticed whatever those issues are. They have informed me of them proactively and they have addressed them very rigorously. So, and they have already really embedded themselves in the community. I will tell you, there's lots of meetings that I have been in that I have not personally invited Partners, nor did I think they knew about those meetings. And they have been there. So they have plugged themselves into the various committees, the various councils. And so I'm pleased today to introduce to you Jackie Copeland, who is the Regional Director for Partners Health Management. And he will be our primary point of contact with our relationship with Partners as our new LME MCO.
Welcome, Mr. Copeland. I think we've mentioned your name four times. You've never had a chance to speak, so.
Good afternoon. Again, thank you, Ms. Robson, for the introduction. Ash, it's got me.
While we're waiting on Mr. Copeland, he's no stranger to this community. I met him at the Clemens Y where he, he worked while he was still working in the LME MCO world and got to know him. And so he has been connected in the ADD, SA and MH community in this, in this community for a long period of time. And I used to tell him I wish he'd come over and work for us. And so it's a, it's a great day. And Chantel, as she's, she did not know Jackie, but, but she found out pretty quickly that everybody in the, in this whole arena knows him. So he is no, he is no stranger and he lives over in Pop Town, so.
I'm just curious, Mr. Copeland, if I may. Do you know Mr. Dolph is Copeland by chance? I get that quite often, but I know of him, but we're not related. I get that all the time with folks. I hear he's a good person to be mentioned in the same sentence with. So I take that as a compliment. And again, I want to say thank you on behalf of Partners Health Management. We are just honored that you have chosen to partners. And we look forward to serving you and your, and our consumers here. Again, as said, I'm excited because I've worked for Partners. It merged with another agency that I worked for called Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare. And I haven't had a chance to work where I live at. And so I'm excited because now I do. And so myself, and I look forward to what Partners can bring for Forsyth County. Okay, as I said, we're honored to be serving Forsyth County. As you know, we've had a lot of expansion in the last few months. One of that is Forsyth County bringing it on board. As Ms. Robson said, since November 1st, 18 days and counting, things have been going fairly well. We've been able to hit a few things to integrate that in. I'm going to touch on some of those, but I know our time and I'm between you and your break and that's not a good position to be in, so I'll be mindful of that. Again, we have, as Ms. Robson said, had a few minor hiccups, but we've been able to alleviate that. A lot of that was related to the transition over from Cardinal Innovations and some of the data aspects of it. We ran into one item, what Partners did is decided to wear some items that weren't available to us that we utilized for our level of care decisions on our authorizations. We made the decision of, we didn't, we made a commitment to maintain in continuity of care, that consumers would not have any breaks. Providers will continue to serve the members that have been serving. So with that, we just did some wraparound things and got approval from the Department of Health and Human Services to do that. So we're glad to say things are going well with that. Next, again, the role of the Regional Director. Partners has a process, we do things a little differently than our peers do. Peer LME MCOs, we assign regions to, with a key point person who'll be the contact for a variety of community stakeholders, be it from county officials to local stakeholders, other key members in the community, to kind of see where there are issues to try to find ways, we can then be there to respond to those. Partner also uses this as an opportunity to be very collaborative in our approach. We want to be a part, and we will be a part of Forsyth County and engage in a variety of groups and agencies and boards. Just let you know, you'll probably see my name coming soon for some various boards that have already, Ms. Robson had made me submit the application. So you'll be seeing those coming soon. And that's just our way. We feel that we, if we are there, we can identify what the issues are, how we can be a good partner with and make sure that it happens. And also, it's a good opportunity we ran into. As you know, initially, we were looking at a January 1st, 2022 go-live date. The Secretary asked us to compress that timeframe. And so some of the things that we want to do, we had to kind of, we had to prioritize. And so one of those, those are commitment to be involved in various committees. And so we're, we're doing our best to be able to meet that need. Continue engagement. I kind of talked about this a little bit. What we've been doing in this timeframe, we would have liked to have longer, but we're making the best of the time we do have. And with that, we've been offering countless webinars and trainings for providers, for community members, for other stakeholders so they can get to know Partners a little bit, because it is going to be a short type of opportunity for us to know each other. Member and community cafes, we have them regularly. As you know, since COVID, we've now had to be virtual. So we have those virtually. So, so a member, a provider, a community person can participate on those. And what we do is we, even though I will be the Regional Director, we take a, we take a team approach. And the various departments at Partners will also be participating. And Ms. Robson says, some of them are on various committees right now and will be available to the county. It just won't be Jackie Copeland, it'll be other people also. We have quarterly provider forums. And these are great opportunities for providers to come together. And one, to kind of help us understand what they're facing. Also, if there are new initiatives or new issues that we're facing or communities are facing, we can bring that to their attention. We've been doing this as a practice for a long time now. Actually, these provider forums are pretty much self-led. We have staff there that to staff it and present, but they pretty much control what their agenda is going to be and they take some suggestions from us. We find it's a great way to, for one, it helps because as certain providers do well, they can share that knowledge with their peers. And it's a great way, too, as new initiatives, as I said, come about or evidence-based practices or the projects we may be involved in, we can garner support from our provider network. And finally, community collaboratives and committees. Forsyth County already has those. We look forward to being a part of those to kind of look at how we can work with various organizations to address the, at this time, behavioral health needs. Folks who have mental health and substance use, intellectual development, development disability issues. But also, as you've probably heard about, Taylor Plan rollout, the change in the Medicaid reformation, are, will change, too. We'll have a broader footprint far as people will serve. We'll have a broader footprint as far as people will serve with greater needs on the behavioral, physical health side also. Some upcoming outreach events, you have listed before you here. I mentioned the member cafes. We do them on a regular basis every Tuesday of each month, from 1 to 2. Right now, they're virtual. We would like for those to be face-to-face, and we'll get to that point. But right now, I think it makes sense based off, we're still in the middle of a COVID situation. Community cafes, this is where a broader group of folks can come and participate. Great place, too, for family members who are caring for someone who has a behavioral health or intellectual disability, that they can come and get support and ask questions of Partners, what's going on, and we can give them information. Next quarterly provider forum, I kind of mentioned that earlier. That's the date we have that next one coming up is Wednesday, December 8th, from 1 to 3. Stuck too far here there. One too many times. I have a few more slides, I promise, and I'll be out of your way.
Mr. Copeland, you know now why she's one of the best clerk to the county commissioners in the state. She comes to the rescue.
I'll do it again, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so that was the right one. I think so.
Okay. And again, thank you for your patience with that. Ensuring a smooth transition, what we want to make sure, again, as I said earlier, continuity of care is in place, so that consumers can continue to receive services that they are aware of, so we've kind of focused on that. One way we've done that is we went into a prioritizing certain providers that we wanted to make sure that they are on board and ready to go on November 1st. We've done that. We also wanted to focus in on Medicaid in lieu of services. These are services that the state allows us to carve out new services that fit a specific need. Of course, the Department, the Department of Health and Service has to approve that. They don't give us any additional monies for that. It's just we can be more creative what we do have. And then we also, again, we've had a lot of various meetings to kind of make sure that people are aware of the changes are. Prioritizing providers, as I said, we identified some providers we wanted to go at. We identified 159 providers serving Forsyth County. 97% of those are on board. They're ready to go as of November 1. We have five in process, on board, and finalization. So we're really working to make sure and honor the fact that people have established relationships with a provider and to maintain that. And we're also looking at ways, this is where the community input comes into play in provider forums and other stakeholder groups, about any gaps that may be there. Again, since we typically do an environmental scan and take a lot of time to get ready, but because of the compressed timeframe warrant, so we're doing that now as we go forward. I mentioned in lieu of services. Again, just to let you on, the key point to know is Cardinal Innovations, they had about 10 in lieu of service definitions. We were able to bring over, use eight of those, continue eight of those. Two of them we already had done at Partners in our other areas and now in Forsyth County. And then we also brought more, too. We have eight additional ones on top of that, that we put in play, that now Forsyth County has access to. Partners was, we were one of the few LME MCOs, probably had the most in lieu of service definitions, just because it provided opportunity to fill some gaps, do things uniquely based off the area and what the needs are of the county itself. Talked about community outreach, I won't go too much into this slide to take up too much of your time, just to point out some of the key things we've kind of do. If you've been down Interstate 40, you've seen our billboard out there. We've also have significant social media outreach. We find consumers really have embraced that platform, and we constantly put information out there so we can talk about the various cafes, we're having other meetings, and just engage them on a lot of other platforms also in a due education. And in conclusion, Partners, we are very committed to Forsyth County, as you know. We're excited, I'm very excited, about being able to serve Forsyth County and meet the needs of our members and consumers here in the county. One thing you'll see with our tagline, we try to live that as our motto, improving lives and strengthening communities. We see that as not only working with the individual consumer and what their needs are, but also the community itself, because we know if we improve those lives, it helps to strengthen our overall community. And finally, some contact numbers here for you. We have a 24-hour crisis line or access to care line. It also handles crisis calls and what have you. It's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 65 days a year, there's someone there to handle calls that come in, be it from a consumer calling in, or a family member, or even maybe a provider or someone else, we're there to help information. Again, we have a member engagement team. They reach out to members and make sure they're engaged in either coming into our system or people are interested in information about behavioral health issues, they're there. This group also works closely with the Consumers and Family Advisory Committee, known as CFAC, so they work with them. And finally, Jackie Copeland, I'm your Regional Director of Community Operations for Forsyth County. Again, I look forward to working with all of you. And I think that is the last slide I have.
Sure glad you came, it's a good report. Any questions for Mr. Copeland?
Mr. Copeland, just so you know, in Poughtown, that other Copeland I referred to resides in Poughtown also, just so you know.
That's good, that's good. I may need to use his name by getting me in kind of pickles.
I got one real quick question.
Yes, sir.
And that is, there are 14 counties in the new Partners area.
Yes.
So how many of you are there? You may have said this earlier, how many Regional Directors are there in the 14 counties?
We're just adding some, obviously. We're at about five. We break them off by certain regions. Forsyth and Davie area is one region, of course, we had Davie also. As you know, we serve in the Gess and Lincoln Cleveland area, then over in Catawba, Burke, and Hiredos Surinacan is a different region. And then, of course, we've added Catawba, Union, and Stanley, so they have a direct. So each one is dedicated there.
You anticipate five regions, and ours is Forsyth and Davie.
Right, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank you for your time.
American Rescue Act recommendations coming up next from Lee Plunkett and Ayesha Carter. And the question is, we've got a 20-item agenda to go over, and it's 3:30.
And I was thinking we would embed that discussion with the agenda item that is up for action on the second, so I think we can do that, and that may actually avoid some confusion.
Go for it.
So I think I see folks wanting to take about a five-minute recess, so.
Good. We will take a five-minute recess.
Second, I'll turn the meeting over to Dudley Watts.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. Yep, basically, the only other item we have is just to finalize this agenda for the December 2nd meeting. Like I said, we'll, we have some ARPA recommendations that will flow into the next cycle, and we'll do that as part of the agenda item that's here from the last cycle, and, and talk a little bit about what kind of where we are with that. So, as you look at the agenda that we've got, I'll go ahead and dive into it. Obviously, there's the proclamation recognizing the National Guard, which is the action you took. That will just formalize the, the action you just took in the briefing session. The first part of this agenda, as you, as you see it, is, as it has been in previous years, it is the organizational meeting that we've sort of embedded into this meeting. And so, it's got chairman's year-end review, so an opportunity for the chairman to kind of review progress we've made over the last year, that formal transfer of pending business to the successor board, election of chairman and vice chairman to serve for the upcoming year. You've got the renewing and updating bonds for various for Sycamore County officials. And then you've got the meeting schedule. And the meeting schedule, I believe, has been, is in hard copy in front of you. And this is the one, Madam Clerk, with the December modifications?
So, the schedule that is in green is the proposed 2022 schedule. However, there is another sheet.
Yes.
That has, in black type, and it has some red wording on it.
Right, this sheet that looks like this right here, so that one.
That's right. Would you like me to go ahead and start, or would you like to discuss that?
I think I'm going to give this to you, if it's that easy, so I'll do that.
That's fine. Okay, so, the current schedule for the remainder of 2020 has our last meeting for December 16th. And that would put our first briefing for the 2022 year for January 6th, followed by the second briefing for January 13th. So, our first meeting of 2022 would be January 20th, and that is over a month in between meetings.
Yep. And so, we, in our conversations, we felt like that was a lot of real estate between those two times, so we thought about how to deal with that.
And so, if you look on the right-hand side of the page, the proposed schedule, December 16th would still be a meeting, but we would add a first briefing, and then add a second briefing on December 23rd, which would move up the first meeting of 2022 to January 6th.
I have a suggestion. What if we do the, on the, on the 16th, the meeting and the first briefing, and then let's just not have a second briefing, and go ahead and start in January?
So, so still have a meeting on January the 6th?
Yeah, meet on January the 6th, and you just have, you have a meeting. Yeah, you start back to meetings. You're only going to brief that meeting one time. So, you brief it just one time.
Works. It works. You just, we'll need a little bit of grace and mercy on what that agenda looks like when you get it before we head into the 6th. And I can try to...
Well, the briefing...
The grace and mercy would be in your hands.
You were plan, let me back up. You were planning on having the first briefing on the 16th anyway. That's what you were proposing. So, you will be showing the briefing of that agenda. And if there are questions that, if there, something needs to come up when we have the first meeting, we could, there may be a few more questions, I guess, possibly.
And I can, I can communicate to you changes that occur going into the, that would be on the second briefing. We can essentially do that just by memo from, from me and Ashley Deall, so.
Yeah, I think we all agree on that, so.
So, no, uh...
No December 23rd briefing.
Got you.
That would be your Christmas gift to the commissioners.
Well, I think we'd kind of like it, too. So, that'd be great, as long as, as long as...
Thank you.
So, very good. So, I hear that's where we want to be. So, that's what you'll see as the agenda item for the meeting schedule going into the organizational meeting. The only other item was, we, we did send out, I believe, the Commissioner Martin had actually prepared, had done some work around kind of formalizing the meeting protocol, meeting procedures. And so, do we want to talk about that, and do we want those added to the agenda in the organizational meeting? And have you seen them?
What's your pleasure?
Can we take that up in March?
Take it up in March?
There, there were copies.
Well, it's really short. And I, in fact, it's basically what Dudley shared a long time ago about sort of, and he listed this kind of the way we've been doing business. And so, this sort of turns it into, this is the way we will do business. And the only thing that's different, I think, is at the very end, it actually says, you could put an item on the second briefing, if you had an issue that, that one, that had not been briefed in the first briefing, you could add it at that briefing, which is a week's notice before the meeting. If there were four commissioners that said, yep, that, let's add that for next, let's go ahead and do that next time. That's the only thing that's different. And it basically says, in direct language, there will not be agenda items added during the regular meeting. There will be, that will not happen, what it says. But it's basically what Dudley sent, but you, I, there's a little word smithing, but not much. I took out a typically, I think, one time, and just left, this is the way it is. It's that kind of editing.
Why don't we wait until January? I mean, we don't, it's not earth-shattering.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, just wait till, give it a month and a half.
Very good. All right. And then the last item on that organization is obviously the time for commissioner comments at that meeting. And so, we'll go ahead and dive into the, kind of the regular business that will come after the organizational meeting. Item 9, you've got a public hearing on ordinance meeting chapter 5 and 11 of the Unified Developments ordinances for specific standards for storage services. You've got the associated ordinance with that. Tiffany White's here, or Chris can review that if you want to, but you did see it two weeks ago. Do you want to, do you want that presentation again?
Your feelings on that? Just put it off? You don't want it?
Okay, all right. And then, so, Chris may, Chris may get away on this other one, too. It's a public hearing on zoning petition of Southeast Land Holdings LLC from General, from GIS and RS20 to GIS. Got a whole bunch of uses there. It's zoning doc F15, F1610. You want Christopher, Christopher?
I have several questions.
Okay, Chris, come on up. Why don't you do a quick, quick, quick review of the item, and then we'll take questions.
Chris, you got to be real slow.
It's getting old. I am getting old.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is a rezoning petition, as the manager said, from GIS and RS20 to GIS for Southeast Land Holdings LLC located out on Renolda Road. This is a subject property shown on the legacy growth management area map in the future growth area. Here is the subject property highlighted in yellow. You'll note that majority of the portion, majority of the site's already zoned at GIS, but there is a portion that is zoned RS20. And this is the subject property shown on the countywide aerial photo. Here are just a number of images. This is the old 67 motor site out on Renolda. Just some various views looking up and down Renolda and out the site. Here is the subject property shown in the land use recommendation for the North Suburban Area Plan update. It does recommend the entire parcel be zoned industrial. Here is the site plan that's contemplated as part of this proposal. It does show taking the westernmost portion of the site and turning it into constructing storage service retail uses of the external access variety. And here are some images of those proposed units. In summary, the majority of the site is currently zoned GIS. The area plan does recommend industrial land use for the subject property. Use storage services retail typically generates limited trips. The request does include a broad list of other intense uses, but in order to realize any of those uses, it necessitate coming back before the county commissioners for a site plan amendment. This was heard by the planning board at their October 14th public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and the planning board did recommend approval of the request eight to one, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, could you go back to, just go back a few slides to the, to the actual map that has the top, that, that one there?
This one?
That one, yes. A couple of questions, in fact, I drive by that about two times a day. And, and I have noticed, I think, and there's also a property owner nearby that has sent me a number of pictures and questions. And particularly, the, one of the questions is in terms of the number of storage units. Was that the term, was that mentioned last time, that what the sort of anticipated in terms of the storage unit numbers?
It's not, I don't know. That's, that's nothing that we track as far as the total number of units, because it's not, it's not anything that generates, you know, that traffic generation or anything. Like, a lot of times for a restaurant or like residential use, you look at those numbers because it determines the trip generation, but that's not what trip, determines trip generation in this, in this type of a use.
That was a curiosity question. The question, and I have some concerns about this, is just the location of the entrance, which is at that blue, I guess, arrow that you have there on that, on that, that's, on the site. Because just before that, when you get to the, there's actually, there's, there's, there's very poor site clearance when you're looking south from that entrance. In fact, you've got to, go to another picture, you've got another picture that gets that close.
Well, that was the one that was off the end that I thought showed the site distance.
Well, there's one, to show where it is, go back to the other picture, and I'll show you the one that's got the, whoa, one more. That, whoa, go back, yeah. That, that is facing south. And you can see it's going up a hill, the rise, and I think the entrance is about where that, not the RV...
The truck.
The truck. The truck is where the entrance is. And, and you think of, you know, say somebody stored a great big RV, or stored a, a long travel trailer, pulling out, turning left onto Renolda, that's, 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 the site clearance both ways, coming when you're car, traveling in a car the other way, as well as the time it takes to get out. It is right on, I mean, that's a, that's a low site clearance. I actually looked at it again today. It's just that, that piece. And I think that's, I think that's part of the, and, and you have a turn lane already installed just slightly to the south, and a turn lane would really be great for the people approaching from a, from the north and turning left into that area. So, I think, I think that is kind, I realize, I see, guys, that the developers used sort of the, the topographical map, and it looks like there's actually a retaining wall, right? I mean, on the, the three-lane, I don't know if you can see the turn lane in your, where it flares out in the highway part there.
One of, you know, one of the issues that I, that I will speak to is, if you notice, as far as the, the potential, I mean, obviously, you can't dictate how someone does something, but the, there is a substantial amount of right-of-way between the edge of the pavement and the actual property. You know, obviously, I can't tell you how someone may or may not park a vehicle out there, but if they parked it to where you were having a hard time seeing around it, that means they've parked it in the right-of-way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about parking. I'm talking about using the, the location of the entrance.
Right. Well, I understand what you're saying, but one of the things you did mention was, you know, like where that, if you had something parked there and trying to see around it.
No, I meant pulling out. I mean, if somebody's pulling out of that entrance, or pulling into that entrance with a large trailer, or a truck, or a big RV, I mean, it's just a, it's, there's not much sight room when you're traveling north. And then there it is, you go over the crest of the hill, and it's right in front of you. Or, you're pulling out and same thing's happening if you're in, if you're the driver getting out of that entrance. And there's a third, there's a turn lane literally within probably 100 yards if you're traveling south already. So, I mean, it seems to me that the entrance, I'm sure it's taking advantage of topographical area and to put those parking places in the back, but that is a, I think, a very poor location for the entrance onto, onto Renolda.
Keep in mind, you know, obviously, whenever we review this, we review this for planning, planning issues, and there are other departments that review, review these. Obviously, since this is an NC DOT road, it was reviewed by NC DOT, and their comments are included in your packet. And we do have a condition of approval related to the issuance of the driveway permit. One of the things that they do have noted in their review is, an additional comment is that adequate site distance will have to be provided for the new driveway connection. A minimum site distance of 100 feet for every 10 mile per hour design speed is required for issuance and acceptance of the driveway permit. So, that will be reviewed at the time that they're doing it. And if they can't obtain proper site distance there, they may have to slightly shift it, or they may have to come back with a site plan amendment. If they, if it's demonstrated they can't meet that requirement that NC DOT is, is posting as part of the driveway permit approval process.
The speed limit's 55 there, so you're talking, you're talking at 550 feet.
Right.
I'd say there's not 550 feet there. Yeah, yeah, so that's coming, you're saying that's a later time issue.
Essentially, normally, what happens, they get the driveway permit approved, then they come back and actually, they get these rezoning approved, then they come back and apply for the driveway permit at the time they're actually going through the construction drawing phase.
And, and I know on the GIS, there are a million uses potentially, but at least the, the citizen I spoke with thinks there is mention or a plan to also have rental, like Penske Trucks rental, or U-Haul Truck rental, like truck rentals, not just the storage area. Was that, was that mentioned as a, another?
It wasn't, but if that was one, and I don't have the, I have not looked comprehensively at the list of uses. I can go back and review those. But if that was something that was allowed there, that is something that is typically associated with storage service retail uses. So, you know, again, as long as they would just be parking them in the areas within, you know, within the storage services retail area, that's something that's commonly associated with a storage service retail use.
But at least to your knowledge, that's not contemplated at the moment.
I mean, that hasn't been, that hasn't been disclosed to us. But again, if it is a use that's permitted in the list of permitted uses, it is something that is commonly associated. As long as they wouldn't have to modify their site plan to do it, they would be able to.
Okay. I just, I just know that there's concern about the amount of traffic on that entrance, particularly where it's located. I think if it's in another place, that becomes less of an issue.
And I'm not sure if the person that contacted you is the person that had also written some stuff into the planning board. And, you know, I think we actually went back and checked with NC DOT and made them, they went in and amended their comments to make sure it was clear to the petitioner that they would have to meet that site distance requirement.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, this is another question for you, Chris, related to what I brought up the last time we met. Those two neighborhoods that have one way in and one way out. The one that I'm really concerned about is right off Oak Summit, between Highway 8 and Old Royal Hall Road. It's called Summit Square 1, which has about seven or five units in it already, individual homes. The second one being built will have 80 homes. And at this point, there's only one way in and one way out. And Oak Summit itself is already overburdened with traffic. In fact, it's on a TAC ordinance to come up on the next cycle of projects, because there's a lot of traffic already there. The other development is right off of Hootier Road. If you go down Hootier Road and make a right on Legare, you run into Novak. If you make a left and go all the way down to the end of Novak, there's a new development that has 125 units in that development. One way in, one way out.
There is no maximum number of units that can go into a subdivision.
It's not the units I'm concerned about.
Not, not within the city.
Okay, it's not the units, it's the entrance in and entrance out.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But I mean, there is no correlation between the number of entrances and the number of homes.
There is none.
There is none.
We don't have an ordinance to provide more than one way into development?
Well, again, there are future stub streets that would go out and potentially interconnect and have other ways ins and in and out, but there is nothing in the ordinance that deals with that.
I'm surprised. You mean, you can generate 300 more costs on one road coming out of development with no protection whatsoever from an ordinance to make sure there's more than one way in a development and out?
That's correct.
Well, we got to do something about that, because that's the danger to the community.
That's, that's within the city.
Yeah. Well, I'm going, I need to talk to the city then.
All righty. All right. The item 11 is also, Chris, is it's a public hearing on zoning petition of Michelle Goodson and Ronnie Goodson, GAD, and RM8 to general industrial. Do you have any questions about that? Well, Chris, to present?
Comments?
No? All right, I think we're, I think we're good. All right. I'll go ahead and dive into the rest of the agenda. Item 12, our approval of the minutes for the meeting of November 4th. Item 13 is amendment to the 2020 Schools Capital Maintenance Capital Projects Ordinance. Adam Furtinbott reviewed that last Thursday. He's here if you have any questions on that. Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Item 14 is an amendment to the 2018 Forsyth Technical Community College's Capital Maintenance Two-Thirds Bond Capital Project Ordinance to approve additional projects. You've got the associated amendment as well. Questions?
Questions?
Not a one.
All right. Item 15 is a resolution approving recommendations related to requests received for consideration of funding through the American Rescue Plan Act for Affordable Housing sub-initiative and Gun Violence and Crime Prevention sub-initiative. Let's go ahead and, if I can get Kyle to come up and review this very quickly, and then we'll turn our attention to the recommendations that'll be coming in this next cycle, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, the item that's before you in, in item number 15, it formally, it is formally approving recommendations related to two sub-initiatives, which were the Affordable Housing and the Gun Violence and Crime Prevention sub-initiatives. And it's also aligning expenditures that have already been approved by the board in prior, in prior meetings. And so, the amendment, as far as the aligning the expenditures, the amendment is necessary, because when we set the, the fund up, it was, the funds were placed in a budget reserve. And as you know, we've hired Ayesha Carter to be our ARPA administrator, and her position would be funded using these ARPA dollars, and so, we need to move funds for that position. We've also, you know, as we've continued to learn about all the compliance requirements that, that we're going to have, we are recommending an additional position, a compliance-type position. And so, that's also included here. So, so the first part of the amendment would set aside funds for those two positions, as well as some administrative costs that would be used over the next three years. And then, the other part of the amendment is to formally direct the staff to carry out the recommendations related to the Affordable Housing and the Gun Violence and Crime Prevention sub-initiatives. There were seven applications referred for, or related, related to affordable housing that we recommended being referred to the city of Winston-Salem, or a local municipality for consideration where the Requesters project was located. And then, on the Gun Violence and Crime Prevention sub-initiative, there's one from the sheriff's office, and staff was recommending they negotiate an interlocal agreement with the city of Winston-Salem and the town of Kernersville before that comes back to you for consideration. And then, there was a request from the Public Defender's Office, and staff was recommending that be denied, as that request is really more of a state responsibility. And then, we were, the staff was also recommending that applications from Action for Equity and Youth Collaborative be referred to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for further evaluation and the Cure Violence, for the Cure Violence program. And then... And then the last one was related to the Well Center, and the recommendation was to to have the Well Center request funding through the behavioral health funding process of regular dollars, not ARPA dollars, in FY '23. And so that's what the agenda item in 15 lays out.
Okay. Questions, comments? Not a one. Whoops, got one.
Yeah, I do have a question, and if I'm off deadly, please help me. So I knew that we were moving some monies to JCPC out of the ARPA funding, but we took the amount off, correct?
We did, and so that'll have to come back to you. And as soon as we get the Cure Violence report with a budget, those will come back. You have an idea when that might?
So we are entering Phase Three of Four of the Cure Violence Assessment. Phase Three is where when they come on site, and so they will soon be doing that. We're not trying to publicize it because it needs to be kind of low key, where they really go out in the community and see what's happening. And then once that's done, we will get their report. We are about two weeks behind, so it will more than likely be closer to mid-December by the time we get their recommendations.
We do understand just the necessity of the time, and so that that might be one area that we just need to walk, you know, walk in depending on what the constraints are, so. So, yep. And I did meet met this week in that first meeting with Sheriff's Department and and the City of Winston to try to start on some type of a mutual aid or mutual assistance kind of kind of document. So that is that that work is underway. So so that takes care of the the items that are presented for the for the board meeting in terms of the actions. What we were also going to do today, because we're going to we're going to layer some of this work, we had begun to work on three other initiatives. We had begun to work on the Educational Assistance Initiative, the Workforce Development Initiative, and that requires a lot of coordination between the schools and the community college and us, and so had those meetings. The Behavioral Health Projects grouping of the Public Health grouping, it's kind of a subgroup, Chantel is working on actively, and so we've opened that up. She's working with partners and and other other folks around that. We are ready to present to you the the two on educational attainment and workforce development. And then we have added the item, which was a recommendation for partial funding that sort of clears out the water and sewer requests that were made, and so we'll do that. So I think the way we do this is if I can get Lee Plunkett on behalf of the overall, the larger steering committee to talk about the compliance piece of it, part of which is item 16, which I think he's going to tell you, we're going to need to pull off this agenda going into December 2nd, and then we'll turn it over to Kyle Haney and Ayesha to to step through those recommendations.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, I have a very brief update on the compliance process. As we talked about last time, there's just a lot that goes into this piece of the puzzle. And so we have pulled together all of our current policies and procedures that we believe would be impacted by the ARPA funding. And the responsible staff in those areas are reviewing and updating them, particularly for the Uniform Guidance Piece, which is the federal regulations. We're we've pulled in other documents and talked to other local governments, compared what they're doing to try to get some additional help. And so we've we found out most of the other local governments also going through this process as well. And then the school of government had said they would release some policy templates, and the latest I heard on Tuesday was possibly being released in three to four weeks. We'll, once we get ours done, we'll compare to what they have and see if we've missed anything and add it to ours. And so there is progress going forward, but it's been slow. So we are suggesting postponing the current agenda item, which is the next one, number 16, to a later to a later meeting.
Can be done without causing any problems?
I sure hope so.
Okay. I don't, anybody disagree with that? Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. I'll be brief, try to be brief. So first, I want to talk about the communications with applicants. Two weeks ago, we updated the ARPA webpage to show the application status, so that'll be updated every Monday for the public to view. As relates to appeal process, I had a couple of calls about the statuses of the application. There is no formal appeals process as of now. Applicants with questions or concerns about the application status are encouraged to reach out to myself for guidance on what is allowed and apply for the second round This is just a reminder of where we are. We have a total of 176 applications. We have approved two applications as of now, and the remaining balance is 48.8 million. And then the board adopted goal is that 80% of the funds go to the marginalized population. That's the 80% total. Here's a look at a glance of what we've already went through. Non-allowables per federal ARPA guidance, non-allowables per the interstate law, the board, broadband infrastructure non-allowables, sewer and water infrastructure. Four of them were non-allowable, and then we still have to discuss the one, which is the Highway 65 project. The affordable housing, gun violence, and crime prevention, Cal will just discuss. And then today, I'm going to talk about the workforce development, education attainment applications. So I'll let Cal come up and talk about the broadband.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is update, I believe the board may have heard this already, but just want to talk about the broadband and sewer and water infrastructure. So we did receive a couple broadband requests, but due to North Carolina statute not giving us the permission to actually fund broadband development, they were deemed non-allowable. That may, there may be some changes in the current budget that's that's being voted on at the state level that changes that. We have not been able to review those yet, but we'll review those when we're able to. And then the water and sewer, we did receive some applications for that, and they were determined to, four of those are determined to be non-allowable under the ARPA guidance. One that was allowable, we are going to be recommending for approval to this board. This is something that the board has been, it's been on the board several times, but it's the water and sewer line extension outside of Royal Hall, the Highway 65 for that community out there. They had, there was application for the full cost of design engineering permitting and construction. What the recommendation is, is just to use $500,000 to fund the engineering, design, and permitting process for that. The reason why is because there is substantial state dollars available for water and sewer infrastructure, and so staff would then apply for grants from the state to fund the actual construction of that. But this would allow us to move forward and getting that project shovel-ready.
Okay, a quick question. Is that that project is just a water line extension, is it not?
Yes, sir.
It's not a water and sewer?
Yeah, I probably misspoke. Yeah, just water. That's correct.
And to be interrupting, say, there in the infrastructure bill that is signed into law, water and sewers in that as well. Part of it to take out old lead pipes, but there is expansion in it. I guess we have to plot for that, or is that?
I I have not been in a review, so I don't know what the process is for accessing those funds. My, some of the, the ARPA funds are going through state agent, through environmental quality at the state, through the infrastructure and existing grant programs. I'm not sure if that's how that would function as well, but we can look into it.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. All right.
Thank you, Cal.
All right, so for the workforce development, staff recommendations, Forsyth County had four categories that came out of the recommendations. Four applications was do not fund with ARPA funds instead referred to referred to Forsyth County Forsyth Tech Community College for consideration. One was recommended approval pending full compliance and readiness assessment. Two was continue to evaluate interview pending with applicant, and then four was not recommended. We had a good meeting with Forsyth Tech Community College, Janet, Dr. Janet Spriggs. They received $18 million in ARPA funding. Of the the money was restricted to go directly to students, and some of the money was used for technology. They had a deadline to disperse these funds of March 2022. So they have already started actively dispersing their funds, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dudley, that they used all of their funds.
Yeah, they've they've indicated they earmarked those dollars, and they were much more restrictive than, they were very restrictive for community colleges. So, but I think to the last bullet there, we still referred applications over to them because of Forsyth Tech's willingness to partner with all the community organizations because they can actually benefit financially from providing those services through that the full-time equivalents that they that they are helping train.
At no cost to the the partner organization. So just looking a little bit deeper into what applications were referred, these are the four applications that we referred to Forsyth Tech Community College, Empower by Site Source, Gola Community Development Corporation, Project SWAG, and Cyndia CDC. All four of these applications were basically training programs that related to Forsyth Tech Community College.
I think with Project SWAG, we've actually identified that 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 might be in another category as well.
They could possibly be in the education attainment category as well.
And so when you see that in this next grouping, we'll do that.
We had that one recommendation, and that was for Forsyth Tech's Community College Nursing Workforce Development Program. They were asking for, their request was to cover costs related to their nursing education stimulation software. With this software, it could help their associate's degree program as well as their practical nursing program. It will increase the number of nursing graduates Forsyth Tech graduates to meet local workforce needs. And this recommendation is, we recommend this approval pending full compliance and a readiness assessment. We had two applications that we want to continue to evaluate, and we do have interviews pending with the applicants, and that was Greater Winston-Salem Inc. and WinstonNet. And we had four applications that we do not recommend funding with ARPA funds, and that was Melodic Visions, Sure Staffing and Training Enterprises, TCK Providence, and Triad Progressive Three out of the four were high compliance risk, and the one, the one exception was TCK Providence. They were requesting funds for apprenticeship program where they wanted to increase the wages of the apprenticeships apprentices by $3, and we seen that could be a sustainability For the education attainment applications, we had the same four categories and then one extra, and that was the do not fund with ARPA, but instead use pay-go funds. We also had a conversation with Winston-Sophomore County Schools. We met with Superintendent McManus, and they received ESER funding, so they had $231 million in ESER funding, and they have yet to allocate their funds or create an application process for that fund. They have expressed an interest in coordinating with Forsyth County's ARPA process, and of that, well, of the education attainment applications, the ones that related to Winston-Sophomore County Schools, again, we decided to refer some of those for consideration for Winston-Sophomore County Schools because that is their mission and their focus area. These are the nine that we referred to Winston-Sophomore County Schools, Applied Family Services, Beta Box, Big Brothers, Big Sister Services, Developing Future Leaders, Happy Hill Association, Hoops for Lives, League Girls of North Carolina, MAM, STEM, and Sports and STEM.
And that's the one we can add SWAG to?
We can add SWAG right here, yes, we can. And the one recommendation we had was Collidium. They were requesting $100,000 for their PRISM initiative program. This program is to really help with the STEM careers for potential K through 12 graders and address learning loss experienced by our county's most vulnerable students as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And again, this recommendation is, we recommend approving pending a full compliance and readiness We have six applications that we want to continue to evaluate, and interviews are pending. We just have, you know, questions that we want to follow up with these individuals. So we have Center for the Study of Economic Mobility, Prosperity Scholars, Family Services, Child Development Center at the Commons, Imprint Cares, Winston-Salem MITSIR, and YMCA of Northwest North Carolina. With Imprint Cares, I have the asterisks right there because that's the one, well, $1.6 million is capital, and we want to continue to evaluate that portion, but the rest of it, we will refer to Winston-Sophomore County Schools.
What was the YMCA asking for?
YMCA Education, oh, that's the Reach, Reach Center.
Winston Lake?
No, this is not Winston Lake.
Are there two things?
They have two things. One of them was the Reach Center, and the other one was the, what is it, the Hub? What is it called? The referral program, e-referral. So this one is for the Reach Center at Winston Lake.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had one application we wanted to refer to the pay-go funds, and that's the Forsyth County one. This Forsyth County one is Collidium funding for capital construction. Then we have four that we do not recommend, and that was Bookmarks, Salsu School for Visual Arts, Twin City, Kiwanis Club, and the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina. This YMCA of North Carolina is the bidirectional e-referral program. And all of these were high-risk applications. Any questions?
Not a one.
So you'll see these on your December 2nd briefing for the first, when we introduce items for the 16th, and we'll have similar, we'll have a similar resolution that kind of outlines the disposition of that. I think the other thing we're going to do, and I hadn't talked to Ashley about it yet, and I probably should have, but if there's a way to, if there's a way to have actually maybe an ARPA subsection of our agenda, just because the there, we're going to be dealing across with these categories with things coming kind of back into the agenda, and, you know, I think we probably need to keep these ARPA actions kind of separate as we go through, and there'll be a lot of return and follow-up as we as we go through. We have four more categories to deal with moving forward, so obviously, behavioral health of the public health side, but we've got, I think, 51 applications that are really public health in nature. You've got rental assistance, really sort of the DSS grouping of applications, and so that's going to fall there. You've got the tourism, business, assistance kind of applications. There's a fair number of applications there, and then, what's the list? Did I? Okay, maybe that was all of them, so. So anyway, rent, utility, and financial assistance. So we've got a lot of work to do. Our goal would be to get these really done through the January, February timeframe, so we're opening up a spring second round. I think we can see from where we are, there'll be dollars there for a second round, and I think we can see that that there'll need to be some work taken from this experience for the board to really clearly identify what we want to hone in on when we get into that that part of it. The other thing, we are working on a dashboard that that you can see sort of real-time how far we are into this first round process, and you can see how we are, where we are at the 80% goal in that, and so hopefully, we can unveil that in December as well. Any questions?
Chairman, yes, I do. So thank you, Dudley, for at least identifying the 80%. So for me, in the staff recommendation, as far as the presentation is concerned, if we could kind of map it out, like, look at it and and put some pings there in the qualified census tracts, and then we can start identifying the the dollars that are being allocated so that we can keep up with that, but that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, the the difficulty we're going to have and is going to be, you know, the goal around the marginalized communities is really, you may have a program that that doesn't reside there, but fully is focused on addressing that but fully is focused on addressing that community. And so, I think that's one of the challenges that we're gonna have, but we'll try to be really transparent about that.
Any other questions? Alrighty.
So, I'll go ahead and dive into the rest of the agenda. We'll get through this fairly quickly. Item 17, 16, we pulled, as we just mentioned. Item 17, we got a resolution authorizing the purchase of ballistic vests for the Emergency Services Department to accept a donation of $25,000 from the Piedmont Regional Trauma System for the use of ballistic vests. Kyle Wolf reviewed that. He's here if you've got questions.
Questions, comments?
Okay. Item 18, you got a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2021 Historic Preservation Matching Grant to continue the Forsyth County Architectural Survey. Update from the Forsyth County Historical Resources Commission, you got an associated budget ordinance amendment to appropriate those dollars that are really coming, there's a call share with all those communities, so.
Questions?
All right. Item 19, you've got a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement for Forsyth County and MCCI LLC to provide digital automation for the Adult and Family Children's Division using Laserfish. Elizabeth White reviewed that, and that's, that continued project.
Comments?
Okay. All right, you got refunds by the tax accessory collector amount of $9,098.56. Mr. Pollak is here. That was a little bit unusual, but I think that John Burgess had, had introduced that last week. I don't know if you have any questions about that.
Questions, comments? Alrighty.
All right. You got the October 2021 Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report and the adjournment, and that is it for the meeting.
And we will not have a meeting next week, but we'll be back December 2nd, is that correct?
Next week is Thanksgiving, so we'll not be here.
Turkey Day.
That's right.
We have a motion from Senator.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Could we decide if we could send a resolution or individual letters to our Forsyth delegation? They really were nice to us in, in the state budget, and I think we should recognize what they did for us.
Well, with you and an agreement from the Vice Chairman, absolutely. Is there any problem with that?
Maybe we can do that next, next Tuesday, not, I mean, at our December 2nd meeting? Is that a good time to do it, a public resolution?
But do you want to do a resolution, or what?
All right, well, Commissioner. You want to send a letter or have a resolution, which?
I'd like to send individual letters. I think it's more personal. That's just my.
So, it's gonna get personal, that, that'll work.
So, Chairman, I do have one other act as well. I know that we have a new representation as far as Atrium is concerned. So, if we can invite him to our meeting, I would like to just have him come.
Sounds good. Any problems with that?
Well, I didn't understand.
She, Commissioner Whiston does not understand.
It's the new representation from Atrium Help, wait for us.
I presume you're actually suggesting if the CEO can.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's what I had assumed. I will.
Thank you.
He has been here.
Mr. Kaplan. Has moved, we adjourned. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.